Any additions or additions to the agenda?
I'm going to add on the social housing update.
Yeah? Anything else? Just like, just, oh, this is.
That's from when Andrew was here.
No, that's a little control, just for Bruce. Oh, we did that one. Okay, you want to motion to approve the agenda with H four social housing.
It's approved.
Second.
Any further discussion? None? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Delegations presentations. Nobody tonight? The minutes of April the fifteenth. Everybody's read through those? Any areas or initiatives that were missions that we need to correct or change? If none, can we motion to approve the minutes of the fifteenth table? It's approved. Second.
Aye.
Any discuss comments? None? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? No one finish business? We'll move into the C A O report. I have a copy. Did you take it?
No.
Okay.
Do you want this copy, Tom? I have this very.
I'll read it up on screen, yes. So, under Development Officer, um, previous pump, or development permits were issued. Three Water Street for accessory building, eighty-five to eighty-nine Max Street, multi-residential developments. One thirty-nine West Street accessory building, and twenty-seven Thomas Frederick accessory building named Green X. Uh, the Development Office continues to be engaged in several discussions on potential residential development. And I'm in receipt of an application for a development agreement for a multi-residential development in Southend on the property known as Thomas Field. Development's inspection, two building permits, eighty-five, eighty-nine Max Street, multi-residential development, and nine, uh, West Street dwelling repairs. Fire inspections, thirteen Max Street, fire ins- there was a fire inspection deficiency found. Thirty days to correct. One oh one Water Street follow-up inspection, all deficiencies were corrected. Fifteen Burke Street follow-up inspection, and all deficiencies were corrected. Fire, fire department, uh, had fourteen calls and so five of those, so nine were in district, five in town and nine in the district, as opposed to fourteen. We sent them a letter of thank you for the Water Street fires. And visitor information center, so, uh, visitor information center opened for the season yesterday. And so we were not succe- successful in obtaining funding under the Canada Summer Jobs Program. Therefore, we will have four staff this summer with, which will include an onsite manager. Discussions have been held with the manager to land expectations for the season, including use of the back room for displays and interactive sessions while having the city councillors mingling around the downtown as ambassadors. Manager has some really good, great ideas and she would like to put in place.
That's the manager there.
Pardon? Huh?
It's the manager. You mean the manager?
Yeah, manager. Okay.
So, this is like the first summer we haven't had a grant for.
Yeah. Been a while. Back before. Few years ago, we had the same thing.
Should we be asking, is the poundy the pitching person there or not?
Not that, but that's what I mean.
And usually, because they save too, right? When they get, when they get a certain grant, that sort of covers all the costs, if all the costs are covered. If you can get one, it will be out of there. Good for thought.
Started talking to Jeff.
Can I ask, um, if the brochures from the area towards association have been moved?
Yes, they have. They're down at the turn, I understand they're down at the old, we have seen.
Right. Except for four blocks, I think, left in there. With the old.
And we did check, we did check in the R D too. So, that's it. It was quite a discussion, or a long discussion on, on that. To do a good stand that you're doing, that's, that is decision. And that onsite manager, um, was on time, private time, three days a week. So, uh, sort of somewhat like a private project to find out whether, uh, to give the staff guidance and try to figure this out. Like last year and the year before, um, that task sort of fell on, on Leslie's desk and, uh, she just can't do it, or that she didn't do the best job that she could do in certain sense. So, you need, you need, uh, you need somebody to come be there every once in a while, check on them, make sure that, uh, they're, they're doing what they want, and also, uh, talk, talk to their, uh, for council vision of what they'd like to see in the future to start working towards that. Right? So, if we can get that back room used for interpretive, uh, displays and things like that, like I said, manager, she'd get a lot of, a lot of different ideas that she'd like to look forward to. Office of the C A O, so Max Street private, Dexter's Construction, uh, Construction Manager, in charge of our project is now over with the company, which explains the reason why we're not having instructions scheduled as of yet. The Public Works Director has been informed that Dexter will have a new construction man in place by next week. So, that hopefully this week, I guess, for yourself.
I just saw our project manager and they got a hold of me today, so, and I've got a schedule, I, well, I told you, I've got a schedule for the end of next week.
Yeah.
Because I should talk to the whole hardware department.
If they, if they start digging next Monday, for instance, how long will it be from the, without major incidents?
December.
December, yeah. So, they're not starting next week, so probably the January, December, so eight or December.
They have you in November, because we're not going to be able to do your asphalt.
Yeah, okay.
December is cut.
Senior man, the team, uh, met on May fourteenth. We just discussed grant opportunities, the grant coordinator has given a good handle on the grant opportunities. We discussed the provincial capital assistance program and flood risk infrastructure investment program grants. And we are anticipating that we will make applications to the P cap for pre-design slash fore-design as an extension of West Street and third air to South End to enable residential development in the South, South End. We are also planning to make application to the fifth grant for the Shore Road Culver Project. Uh, we will also be making application to the beautification and streetscaping program and community works program. Uh, coastal protection presentation, um, our municipal advisor connected me with the representative and vice president of environment and climate change, who will be in attendance at the June seventeenth, committee hall meeting to give council a presentation and answer any questions council. Yeah, just at the, uh, meetings of Cape Breton, the, uh, Minister, well, I'm stood up there anyway and said that we'll be working closely with the municipalities on coastal action. You know what that means? Yeah. They'll make it more our responsibility than. No, that's where, that's where they're headed. Yeah, they're headed there, yeah. They're downloading that responsibility onto us and the municipalities in our planning and our M P Ss and our L W Ps to factor all of coastal protection into what we have. Instead of then coming up with the regulations and everybody has to. The other thing is they're putting that, it on to the property owners as well, the responsible.
It's backwards. We're being handed with big patchwork quilts of regulations and the way things are done. And it's going to come in another ten years back, problems to say you've got a board mechanism, it's all the same.
Yeah, probably won't come with any money.
They're moving it.
Yeah, now that seems to be what they, what they like to do.
Yeah.
The rail corridor work, my municipal advisor connected me with representatives of private natural resources and renewables. And, uh, Microsoft team, team was set up to discuss the town's interest in ownership of the trail. Executive assistant, I met with him on Thursday and discussed the issue. They were persistent that we did not want to sell sections of the trail that could cause a disconnection within the trail system. In the end, they committed to send in a new application for form a letter of authority to enable the town to see authority over the entire rail corridor instead of the five meter width restriction that we've already had. Okay?
So, they can't open to lease.
Well, this, they tried to argue that this letter of authority would be almost the same as a lease. Can't we buy it? Did they get a lease it for a trip? Well, should they lease it to us or?
Like the times?
Yep. Yeah, well, the, you start from lack of trying, this, uh, you know.
Well, was the explanation when, or maybe you didn't ask, why the answer has theirs, why Pencil has theirs, why Middleton has theirs?
What was their response last?
I asked that question because I, I said, you're aware that you made this exception in other areas? And they said they're willing to carve out a piece, so you have a, uh.
A spur law.
Yes, exactly. You have a section that you need, or they have a use for, they will make an exception to carve that out.
Not, not the main, oh, they want back policy when you reach through. And I said, well, you know, I said, the town isn't interested in not having a trail, but the town is already invested to be able to get funds to, for the trail. I said, we just want to be able to look after the trail the way that we could if we were owners. And I brought up about the Sleipen Falls that we just recently had, and I said, you know, we, we've had these Sleipen Falls, and I said, and everybody's names, the town is the owners in suit. And nobody mentions, even though we mentioned that it's not ours, they, they don't want to take on for companies in the province, it'll take on us, right? And so our insurance company rates go up and, and, uh, dealing with things that we don't even know. Or really, when it gets down to it, have control over. Well, it gives them a sense of control and make a view of it, I guess. And I also told them, said, you know, the, the, the thing, thing is, we have little or no, actually, no communication with the local D N R office. There's, according to the letter of authority, they're supposed to give us direction to certain things that we have, should be asking for and things, but we don't get any communication. And e- every time you do call or ask a question, you get a different answer. Sometimes, oh, no, you can't do that, and other times, no, we're not doing it, you'll have to do it, right? So, it's, and, uh, I said, it's like trying to control overnight camping, especially in the marshaling area, right? I said, we don't own it. I said, we try to enforce and try to, but I said legally, we don't have a, a leg to stand on if somebody wanted to challenge us, because we don't own it. And I said, the other thing is, is that it was, you know, whenever the grass side, grassy side on the north side of the dig station is, is wanted by, by groups, they go to D N R, D N R tells me, ah, go hit and use it, blah, blah, blah. And they never communicate with us, and we find they're after the fact, right? So, I said, so, anyway, they, they feel this is just that. And she did send me the, uh, new application, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but she did send it to me. I'll start reviewing and finding their, they, they said, there's, I said, the town, a number of years ago, I was informed, my, my time, paid after the trail, the rails went up. There was a concept drawn up of what they, the town would like that to have been. And, uh, also said, anything like that, if you can send that along with your application, say, this is what we're wanting for, right? You'll be able to control it. I said, right now, it'd be used for parking. I said, we throw a load or two of Class A on every once in a while, keep the car holes down. But I said, we can't invest any money into it because it doesn't belong to us, or we don't have the authority. Yeah, we can't have that five meters.
Can it's worth it?
That'd be quite a, well, that'd be, but, you know.
Certainly, if nothing else, girl.
Attention to it, yeah. I don't know why, yeah, you can't sell it to them to give a guarantee through an easement or something, it will build a trail. Well, I mean, and that's what I said to her, I said, you know, the province of, the province is giving the town and the municipality, uh, property, I said, where our arena is, that the province gave it to the town, one part of it and the other part of it, they give it to the municipality, because it was in their district and over our boundary. And I said, but there was a caveat in the thing that it'd be used for recreational purposes. And with it ceased to become, be used for recreational purposes, then it reverted back to the province, right? And I said, and when we got the old Tybus site back from the province, or the province gave that, there was covenant on that, that it had to be used for health and wellness. We couldn't, we couldn't just take it back and sell it and put a housing development or something like. Right? So, I said, it's not as though the precedent has already been, been made in all kinds of legal documents, but they, they just dug their heels in and said, no, I said, we don't want to disrupt that connectivity with the trend.
It's not connected, man.
That's it.
I understand it's not connected, man.
That's why we're using the road. Yeah. Well, and that's, that, that's basically what I, I, I told them, I said, you know, I said, uh, where the, you know, council was discussing on whether we're going under the Trails Act or what's not, Road or Trails Act or whatever it's called, uh, the possibility of returning, uh, at least a section of Berth Avenue so that you've got that connectivity. And, uh, that, so I said, you know, council's been invested in, in having that, you know, I said, this is identified in our act of transportation, uh, plan, and it's been important to the act, to act of transportation within the town, and, uh, so, I said, the, our numbers aren't met, I say they're on the town, so I just.
We could ask them where the connection between the B County and Apples County is and if they plan on repairing it.
Yeah.
Good question.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, if it's a good thing, then they better get to work, because it's not very connected. Unless there's an underwater tunnel that I haven't seen, but, uh. There's a long-term plan for the sandbar, for a hundred fifty years.
Well, there's, there's a cap off there too, so.
Now, Pencil definitely owns theirs.
So, uh.
The vein trail street through.
And, uh, Middleton too, because that's where the community garden is.
Um, I don't see that Middleton owns it.
Yeah.
Oh, they just used it.
They just used it. Yeah, they did, train there. Well, maybe. What they did say about that is what I think Lester said, is if there's a spur law.
Yeah.
Then they would sell the town on spur line, like, you know.
Which they did here.
They would give.
Shore Road by then.
So, uh, and so, another piece of spur line to Rises and the other to the owner of the campground.
What about the spur line that went to the war? Is that still there for you, or, well, there's a store on it now? I guess someone's bought it somewhere.
Well, yeah, uh, he did buy it, so he put the expansion on his store. Yeah. He owns that over the, over the water street. And that's why he owns the driveway and the compartment building, because that's his spur, uh, spur, spur line. He's where everything. Well, get that, unless it's off the off limits. Get, get the letter of authority and then say, well, this is a letter of.
It should be disconnected from the minister.
Right? Yeah. I don't think the minister has a note, really. So, in any, that's as much as I can get at this point, but, um, I basically said, uh, I'll see what council's thoughts are. Well, maybe at some point here we can draft a letter right to the minister. Yeah. And guarantee that there'll be a trail through there. So, it's, so it's an option.
Who is the minister?
Do you know, I don't know if that goes to more or not, no, so I don't really, got so many. Okay, okay. Okay, moving on to Davidson onsite. Long list there. She certainly took care of forty-three, forty-five, thirty-seven. She take the count. So, did I? Go ahead, that's one I can all, that's one we're going to.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, Florida, Russia, do this.
So, yeah, okay, that's it. Public Works, anything there? Any questions for you? I guess.
Bathroom's open.
Just bathrooms are open now.
Uh, yes, and I drove by today, and I mentioned it to the director of Public Works, there's a lady standing outside when I drove by, I slowed down, and a lady clicked on the public washroom.
They said no, they were using.
Huh?
They said nobody.
No waiting, we, yeah.
We've had people in the bank asking about them, and they'd be open, so it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, tourists would actually like to use the bathroom without having to, uh, beg, uh, you know, retail.
Or find their way up here to the museums or back to the station, so, there.
Did we get them listed on Google? I don't know. Was it? Did we get them listed online?
Not yet.
Okay. Any, any comments, eh?
Um, not really.
Okay.
Guess everything's there, so it's, the mini home should be late, should be ready, mid to late June for the market. And hopefully bathrooms are open. There's still a way to get your bathroom trucked. It's not, the parts aren't in yet, that's why it's not back in operation. As I said, I did, I did finish my course, um, just finished my last pro, my project, actually, yesterday, last night. There were, it was thirty-seven hours into the project, and it told me it'd take thirty, forty hours, it was, she was a doozy.
Did she make it?
I won't know for at, at least a month if I passed, so.
You will.
Hopefully, I don't know, it was eight weeks, so.
Well, still get something good.
Oh, yeah, learned a lot, so, I'm not playing. Did you learn things?
Have you learned things? You gotta be good.
Yeah, we got really deep head wave on Sunday, Sunday and stuff too, which is kind of great, be good for us ears. Really good, so.
Could you light, light up the lights so I can follow along? Okay?
And scoring process just wants scores.
Is it?
Higher up, a little up, so.
Trust me. Sometime if you got an hour, I'll sit down with everybody, just go over it, because it is.
It's gonna be good, I suppose.
It was worth, it was worth a lot to do that. It's gonna be good for us.
If you're not to see, you don't.
Trust me, there's stuff that they talk, but it's just like, wow, because they're so great, you hear them talk about it, so great. It's really good, really good.
Now, now let's put a climb on to that, let's talk to the director of planning.
So, the report is there, and the, uh, the operating, so capital budget we passed, the operating budget's still working on, uh, they don't even have any preliminary figures for us. The interim tax bills, uh, we've already noted that, they're, they're, they've gone out. And the fire protection rate and the garbage bill is on the, or half of that, this is the first time. Haven't heard a lot of feedback, one way or another, whether council has, but.
I heard, uh, the question was asked why our tax bills went way up, and then I had to explain this. Did we put something there with the water? Yeah, maybe that's why we don't get a lot of.
But I did have. I wasn't able to say what with the water bill, and I can't remember if we did get it to Facebook or the, the website or not, I'm not sure.
There's only a couple.
Uh, the rental units, uh, Mount Street's up to date, the residential dwelling, uh, is, is, well, as of May ninth, is behind on their, their current month's rent. Uh, the marketing levy, um, it's really just an accounting thing, we're gonna have to set up a reserve fund in order to keep everyone happy, uh, because what we have is a, it's, it's a special purpose tax, so every special, for a special purpose tax, we need a reserve fund, because it is, in our consolidated statement, that is revenue of the town, whether we spend it or not, so from the accounting side, we need to count it as revenue. But internally, we need to have a reserve balance, we need to know how much is there at the end of the year or any point in time.
Can you change that special purpose levy reserve fund, because we didn't say it was not a tax?
It, it definitely is a tax.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have more discussion later on.
But you can use the word levy if you wish.
Yes.
Uh, and that, that's pretty much it. Um, I guess in the other, I was wondering how to deal with some of our housing costs that we're seeing be having more of, for example, the trailer that we're talking about. And, uh, talking with some of, uh, people that do my job and the rest of Southwestern Saskatchewan, they're wondering, you know, they, they sort of had their guesses as to how to handle it. And the province came back with an email saying, oh, you prompted quite a good discussion. We're going to have to look at this, because there is no place to put it on the financial information return. So, for now, stick it here, and so we can all be consistent. But it's, it's obviously going to be coming up in the future, and more, this will be, we're spending more on housing. It's a line.
Yeah.
And that's everything unless there were questions.
Just spurred my memory. Maybe we could ask Tom. And Ed, why when you look at the housing department's building on Water Street, their lawn is pristine in mode and well maintained. But if you go by Hillside Apartments, it's about four weeks overdue. And there's another big pile of trash in the same unit we talked about last week.
It's coming up.
That, uh, that's, that's been reported and Laura Lee is going to look at it again, again. Uh, I was told that I asked the same question, uh, regardless of those properties and the contractor doing lawn mowing quick and looking for somebody else. Yeah, they don't have anybody that mowed lawns during the mowing itself.
There's a company, and one was out today and it's a problem. Do you want it in?
Yeah.
Has the model exchanged or doing their own lawn so that?
Oh, good. But I, yeah, they did tell me that the contractor left, so they're hoping. Okay, now we're in the special constable officer Laura Lee.
Yep, she's not here because she's been, uh, taken on to her annual conference and training session.
I received a compliment about it. Said we wouldn't want that job. That was the last one they said. So I know that the First Avenue Thirty-One, First Avenue, that I came, I had a couple complaints that came to. And there's been some incidents down there too, like a place they're investigating. It's. Inside too.
Oh.
Yeah. Any questions, Ed? Tom might be able to answer.
Is the stop sign in taxi getting questioned, uh, within the per view of the town's security cameras?
This stop sign.
Very.
We're going through this every day.
Is, uh, one of the cow drives, so you have been reported to the RCP for not stopping the stop sign? I just wondered if it was somewhere, cameras at the time that it seemed.
Oh, I don't know. I wasn't made aware, that's too. He has a good job trying to keep me up in the neutral point side.
And the, yeah. Okay. Yeah, in regard, we want to, that one. Regards to that three cameras down, the water demolition water, there's maybe some you haven't seen the sign that was posted there.
They got it, yeah, they got it cleaned up pretty good today. Did, did the actual town dump get mad at you or?
No, I contacted and apologized for opening that up. I'll show you what that was. Didn't show you.
These cameras were bad. And the ones across the road, Mary, uh, picked, picked up and it showed up there. They could see that it was placed there, so it was either come down through and placed from Perth Avenue or they come from the sex. You do not understand that chat, chat, but it was.
Three, three.
Four. Three and four in the morning.
But when we checked the other cameras, the camera that was going towards it glitched at exactly the same time as the next camera down the street. From three to four, there was no footage. So something happened to the system at that time that they just got locked in the other apartment.
Must have electronic device that took it down.
You never know, I was, I was thinking too, they can't provide maybe, yeah, which is possible. Because when you check the, check the other cameras, there's really no traffic in that timeframe, so.
Well, actually, if you want, I'll send you the sign, picture of the sign. That's my name. It's downstairs.
Yeah, if you want to see it, I'll bring it up. See my office.
Yeah, you grab it before you go, yeah. Oh, I grab it before you two can take it up.
And my feet.
Any questions for Tom?
No, I'm, I can add a comment on the parking control for parking this area today. Uh, it's not just a garden world that's doing it. There's a lot of, I've seen lots of contractors that will park right up on there too. Uh, so even if Scotia's also a garden world parking somewhere else, uh, they probably do need to look at putting something to keep other people from driving up there. Although it is also funny that it does mention that barracks need to be kept safe by parking somewhere close. If I'm not mistaken, they're probably the only people in town that get to walk around with handguns, so.
I guess reduce the length of time that they're.
Okay.
But that is, could you put maybe some planters on either side of that?
Probably.
Okay.
Okay.
Through podcasts, we're, we're looking into like putting on each side, sidewalks on each side, putting some planters to, to sort of keep people from, discourage people from parking on, on the sidewalk. Because you're, you're right, it's only, it's, but the thing is, it's the armored car companies. Cause it's this time it's armor guard or whatever.
Gear world, it'll be cars, Brinks does it too.
Brinks was doing it and, and Brink's trucks were twice as heavy as what he got in, in, you know. And the thing is, they, those guards just don't have any respect for authority whatsoever. Right? Whereas our side one, in our infrastructure, that, uh, yeah, that's been on the, on the run for years. So, anyway, and I mean, the, the thing is, is that we put no parking signs on this side, fancy door side. And people just ignore those. And, uh, you know, Laura Lee catches them, she's down, takes them, but, uh, you know. They can't get off the road because they get, they have concrete planters there and, uh, you know.
Like the parking rail quarter or back up here.
And they might not be able to turn on the planters.
Yeah. I know what they mean, they don't want to be open in the public area. But, but, you know, they are.
Well, they are as close as they can, but if there's a parking lot right behind them.
Yeah, back in.
Through the back.
And the back, the back entrance too. But the thing with, with that is that there are steps that they have to deal with, right? They want to, well, wheel the gully in on the up surface.
I just, I should correct the, the levy and accommodation tax. More commonly referred to as accommodation tax, and accountants are probably talking about it together as a tax. The provincial legislation uses the word levy.
Levy, it does.
It doesn't use the word tax, so they can't cover it with that.
Yeah.
No, Scotia, it's, it's not an accommodation tax, they use margin levy for it.
Perfect. Cause it's higher money.
Well, that's where accountants differ. But anyways, that's.
It may be a violation of a law, you maybe have to have it given back. Grant coordinator, where's the million dollars? No pressure.
Is this where I have to speak?
Yeah, you can just go on your highlights for residents and all that.
Uh, so just been working with, with all the town staff to identify all the programs. There's lots and lots, there's, uh, four big applications due, many at June, middle of June already, so those are, trying to get those completed. Trying to get some, some final reports done on a couple of long-term grants that we have. That are a bit overdue, so I'll make sure those reports get in. Um, still haven't heard on the farm credit Canada, I checked in with them apparently for the, for the oxygen compressor for Fire Hall. They will let us know in October if we were successful or not, so I'm gonna hold a breath on that one. Uh, and the final reports that I already did in my first couple of weeks of work, we've already brought in a little bit over twenty-five thousand dollars already, so. Trying to do my best to learn some of the administrative doobies, trying to take minutes tonight, which is pretty hilarious. We all know Leslie's doing better job than me.
We can buy AI milk technique. That's what someone used. I, I once, we, we just found the air with you.
What is Jack, Jeff?
Yeah, who should be there.
I actually had a suggestion about, um, instead of using your mics, if there was lapel mics, you could better pick up.
Well, I should, I, I should remind you, you're not using your mics, they're not on. You should use it because we can't hear you on the recording. Mine's on. It's on, but. There. You know how to turn that? But if they get a move of hand, I can show off. Yeah, but we use our mics.
It does help.
It does, yeah.
Getting some access to, to some of the social media just to be able to, as much as I can.
Yeah.
That's what I've been doing.
I'll give you three more weeks from now. Correspondence. Kind of unusual to see a, a, a rural complain of those problems. Yeah. But that's what it is, they're concerned about J-classes or eight while this GHI. And talking with a couple of his valley councillors too, they, they, they're concerned about what this change is going to mean to them, so. So that's just high.
Had a bit of a chase to it and, uh, we know the industrial commission where the, really the province's file wrapped up in the road. And I never want to replace it.
Yeah.
And they went and fixed it, it's still nice.
Well, and they even consolidated it. Who paved the slope on the road? Department of Public Works or?
No, I, I know.
There are some, some of the, some of the residents or occupants of the.
That's funny.
You, you know.
It's even more funny that there's a mechanical, you know, business, right? Hey, I'm gonna have some business.
Yeah, they were going after all the ways, so I didn't tell them. Anyway, uh, Deeperia Recreation Commission. Fortunately, I have each, any questions that we can answer? This is a letter as regards to, uh, how you figure, yeah.
Which is good, I'm glad she noted it, cause at least now we're in the record, so we've done our.
Yeah.
And we didn't hear anything from our coordinator on the wiring that position, Tom?
So this community use account. Cause you were mentioning things that were bad, is that what this fund could be used for?
Yes.
Or is it what's the harm organization or whatever?
Well, see, you don't, you still don't know if there are two accounts. Because the, the money paying to the school for rental. No one knows how that, if, if you're a group and you rented, you pay the school.
And where.
And where does, so did that money go from the school to the, or did a portion of it go or?
No, Barrack hasn't got any money in like five or six years.
And, uh, I'm, I'm understanding is that Barrack's not collecting any money on behalf of the school now. Until this gets settled, right?
So your, the answer to the question is yes, that's what it's for, it's supposed to be for upkeep and light bulbs and gel and all that stuff to keep it going, but. There's, there's, again, no one's responsible. So if it gets worn and torn and used and.
Should we write a letter to the minister saying we're confronting conservative, black community schools?
Okay, at the very least, we should, sorry, at the very least, we should figure out where the, where the funds have been going to.
Yeah.
Because.
They were charging for a little while during COVID, right after they opened in the after COVID.
Yeah, there, there were three or four performances they let go and this one they only charged a hundred dollars plus the cost of, um, having like the tech there. But, you know, before that, the fee was generally three hundred dollars for, uh, for a weekend. And so sometimes even higher than that.
The hospital auxiliary just had their, was about to have their gel.
They did.
Did, did they have to pay?
We can find out, I think Chair brings up a date on something that might be happening or.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or are you still the chair?
About Derek?
Yeah.
Ice chair.
Question.
Matt's.
Matt's chair, now, keeps looking back and forth. Okay. The ring. The ring on this, I was part of this discussion because I was on the nominate committee along with several others and, uh, and it was always, we never was really aware of when they were short a member or when they needed a member. Uh, it, it, the, the person that used to manage the nominate committee, when she left and went to turning the tide. But prior to that, she was right on top of it. You guys need a member at this particular date, this is the matrix, we'd like to see that member have, so that kind of just disappeared. So the floating ran in there, so. Discussion was around this, to, to have it work this way. And the ones that are on nominate committee. Approved this, yeah. We thought it was a great idea, take it out of Barrack's. We're sitting up here, you got somebody sending a barricade, you got somebody sending, we really never communicated, didn't know who, who was what, who was needed, et cetera. So these guys, board members are there on a daily, well, monthly basis, they knew, they know what they need, so. If council feels that's the way to go, then we just need a motion to approve this change. And Gee Sarek was, he was the chair of liaison oversight committee, he's still it, but he was also on the nominate committee.
So could you just, for the record, what is the regional enterprise network and do we, are we part of it?
Yes, the Western Way, yeah, and we commit financially to it. And that includes Big B right around the barracks. And they, and, and actually the CEO was coming here, I invited her here, she's gonna bring you some data on the business plan and where they're at. They work on the bigger files like economic development, the internet file, immigration well. So I told her to come to council and bring you up to speed as to where they are. Yeah, so you can ask some more pointed questions. So you agree to this change, if they make this new uh, committee, that I need a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve it.
And secondary?
Second.
In our communication from elected officials, there'll be one member from the liaison oversight committee, which is made up of all elected officials or descendants. So that person was communicating that to here, as to who's joining the board. And we are down the seat from this part of the country, so if you're aware of any great person and it's actually looking for a finance person, someone with a finance background. Uh, that we could nominate for the board.
Talking accounting, finance or?
Though some of them can just pick up a financial statement and understand the basics of it and the balance sheet. Doesn't have to be a CPA or a CA or somebody like that. You're aware of somebody. Provide me the name. All of us are favored that much to say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Staff are looking for some decisions. They like to get going on the shorter route.
How much is the four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that goes on the budget? You'd have to say four hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Well, this is, this be asked for a capital budget, so.
Yeah, it was five hundred thousand, but there's going to be a plus plus on top of this. Ben can give you more. Seventy.
It's a baby of business today.
Well, sort of to ask it, what, that number that we come up with, around seventy thousand?
It's seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
Call it eighty.
Much to the addition, this, this four or whatever five is in their capital budget, right?
So the addition is the purchase of all works, the paving and the background, which was taken out thinking.
We're gonna save.
Save money.
And we did consider briefly, and I say briefly because our lawyer squashed it. And that was to go back to the previous, law was tender from the previous side and he said because they didn't bid the second time around. We were just looking for trouble.
So we approved this already.
Like.
Five hundred thousand dollars in capital budget. So we have awarded tenders. So that's what you're, you're asking us to award the tender.
Yep.
Because anything over fifty thousand, yeah, council has to approve.
A warrant. We'll make that motion that we approve and award the tender to G and R Kelly and that's limited to about four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars in 2015.
I'll second that.
Could you put a little bit of a dam in there so I have a pond at my house?
Well, if we don't do it, we'll have a big pond.
All of us in favor of that motion, staff?
That's a recommendation from the council.
Yeah. All in favor of that?
Aye.
No any ayes? Decision priority.
I seen that for residents into a black world.
Yeah.
Is it priority?
Yeah, so there's, there's two priority resolutions. One for each of those pro, projects, the capital assistance program. And that's for, uh, the, uh, I guess basically the opening of less streets or south of St. George Street. And, uh, the other one is, uh, funding hopefully for flood risk mitigation on Shore Road Culver. Cause the thing is that Culver technically under the A standard is under solid anyway or wouldn't be. And, uh,
Yeah.
Yeah. So where you would be, if we don't do nothing, we're on the hook liability wise because we know that it's in the state that it's in. And, uh, so it collapses in the eighteen wheeler in the middle of it or the passenger car in the middle of it. It doesn't matter. We're on, on the hook liability wise. And the other thing answered, it does collapse, a portion of it collapses and causes, causes flooding and there will be name for you know, lots of economic hardship to make there. Yeah.
That's a big point.
Yeah. And also, well, you got the coins as well. Right. And more digging, anything.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's a, there, there's a lot. This may be a long shot, but, uh, what's the potential funding percentage of these grants? Uh, these ones are up to fifty percent, aren't they?
No. They don't. What were they, Rob? There was a max on the, it was two hundred and fifty thousand max on the whole kitty, wasn't it?
Yeah. So FRIP, FRIP is, the FRIP fund is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars total for profits.
True, yeah. Okay, that digs a ditch somewheres.
But that's the one that we got there a few years ago.
We're doing, uh, we're doing packet route. Very sad. This is the same, oh, okay.
You did quite a, quite a chunk at that point.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's no way that they're gonna give us the whole two hundred and fifty thousand, right? But any, at this point, I think anything, if they could cover our overreach, if you get our overreach from them, then, you know, it'd be a little better. Not ideal, but it's better than, not, it's not much worth the ink and, and Rob's time to put, yes, and put it together. And, uh,
That, that grant is considered undersubscribed. That's the language that my contact in the province uses. Whereas PCAP is heavily oversubscribed.
People love the biggest ministers.
Okay, well, can we on a motion, uh, take this to council? We certainly want to probably fund some money, so.
Both together or separate?
Oh, it's, but separate, yeah, cause you, you need to put that on the, the applications.
Well, when it comes to, I mean, you could jointly hear the recommendation of both the council.
But when we get to the council, they'll have to be done individually because I'll have to certify that these resolutions were passed. Yeah.
Okay, I'll move that we take the priority resolution provincial capital assistance program and the priority resolution flood risk infrastructure investment program to council.
Secondary? Secondary?
Second?
Yeah. Hey, this could be, well.
I spent half billions of that already.
He's gonna get it back now.
Yeah, get it back.
All of us in favor of that motion to say aye?
Aye.
You had any ayes? Yeah. Okay. Uh, social equity.
So Andrea was here, uh, recall, I asked her to go down First Avenue and take a look. So she actually went down First Avenue and took a look. Called me next day. Kind of shocked what was going on down there. And, uh, she got me in touch. She goes, I'll get you a contact, like she did Tom, everything else. So she gave me a contact. Her name is Denise Turnbull and she's with housing in Scotia. She called me on the phone Friday. We talked for a little hour, uh, discussed a lot of things that were going on down there. She goes, after I seen the pictures from Andrea, I got two guys down there ready to do some work. Apparently there was a couple of guys down there the next day. Uh, she goes, we do have a plan done up as of a couple of days ago. She sent it through to me. Uh, she sent it through to me about an hour ago. Uh, so the plan is for clean third, first avenue homes are gonna, are all site for capital replacement in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Capital replacement work going for his new roof, siding, windows, as well as energy updates such as the insulation heating systems. Uh, tenants will be contacted to clean up all garbage around their home. And we are sourcing of garbage boxes now and planning to put to homes with all garbage boxes. Thank you for passing on your concerns. Please let me know when you talk on your phone. So if anybody has anything you want to get back for, I can email on your behalf or whatever. But it sounds like they're gonna clean it up a bit. Like Mayor mentioned tonight about investigations going on down there. I think the biggest thing is for them to get inside those buildings. Have to get inside those.
There, there was an incident involved, actually a firefighter on the side. It's in O side, but they went in and talked to somebody and, and I talked to somebody else, actually it was an RCP officer. There's charges, they, as a result of some activity there and he said it's horrible inside.
Oh, horrible.
And that, that particular unit, it's absolutely.
So I can pass that one for.
Yeah.
We get another update from there. I think that's what the burning was, wasn't it?
Yes, it was. Yeah.
But it sounds like, you know, she's very receptive to get cleaned up. Um, so I, she's coming down next week and hoping Tom and Laura Lee can compete with her maybe when I find up the date.
She's a militant.
Just don't help her.
So that was.
And, and she said on the phone, her biggest problem, because she controls, she's the manager of here all the way down in all Western. She goes, our biggest thing is, you know, how do we educate them? I said, well, we have Ways Check and we have bylaw force serves and stuff, so. She goes, we need support around there, like from the town, so. Laura Lee, you and maybe Ed can get together with her and maybe just have a little chit chat. Maybe we can put some stuff up to get cleaned up. So inside and out, so.
It's been down a number of times to clean it up, or somebody has, but it's right back to the way it was.
I suggested garbage bins and obviously she, she's looking at the garbage, the garbage boxes, at least their garbage.
Laura, Laura Lee is communicating, you know, communicating that to having authority as well. To say, you know, what you need is you need to have a place for, to store the garbage.
Right.
And whether it be a garbage box or whether it be an eight by ten, eight by eight shed of the garbage. So we need to take the rest of that and put it into the road and make it for collection day. So.
This is the lady we want to talk to for sure.
Yeah, she could make up.
It doesn't have mayor local. Doesn't have mayor local.
Yep.
And I said that to you, right, that the mayor had mentioned about, uh, which is fine, it's, I said, well, that's not gonna help them any because they're not gonna pay the fines. Can't afford to pay a fine that long.
Well, we get the landlord.
Yeah, that's right. Zan, right?
Yeah, this is Zan.
Well, maybe you, you might remember.
What?
Once upon a time, there were inspections done in social housing, then.
Yeah.
And if you were found to be lacking, you, you were told to leave. When did that change?
Co-op housing still does. Big, right? Co-op house, count on that, they still do it.
Yes, yes.
That's not eventually.
No, that's not.
Yeah, there's funding here.
It's a wish washing.
But they'll say, but they'll say these, these income supported housing down here, they'll say, well, we just can't throw a move on the street.
That's true.
That's, you know, with all the changes in the Tennessee act and all the act, they can't. But something, that particular unit.
Bad.
Uh, well, they summoned somebody, whenever there's a bathroom in there, but they're not using it properly. It's not bad. The kids are just, something going today, the kids went to school today.
So.
Had to go to school.
Is social services involved with kids?
That's been discussed, but, so I, maybe that's how they, they ended up in school today, so. I don't know any details. So, yeah, so that's good, that's a good take action. So around social housing, I can't say much because I'm embargoed, but there will be an announcement later on in the week, which will be possible. But unembargoed. I had to meet with the offices.
Tom, the one I sent you today, the picture of the, that box is gonna be too small. That's full all the time. And that, uh, bigger box there would be. It might help that.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. I think someone moved out of there this weekend, I guess.
Yes. It's been a mess all, all good.
Yeah. Here, here. Yeah. Okay. Last thing I'll need to do for the evening, if you want, I'll show you the sign that made me famous.
You're, you're me a new partner.
My, my new partner, so. So we're done, ate all the doughnuts, you'll get that. Same there. Anyway, all, uh, anybody wanna make a motion to go home?
Don't move.
Secondary?
Second.